Good evening. I'd like to call the February 1st, 2021 Davie County Commissioners Meeting to order. At this time, I would ask Commissioner Jones to lead us in invocation.
Let us pray. Father, we come here tonight with awe in our hearts. We thank you for blessing us by bestowing upon us the stewardship of this great country, this great county. We thank you for men and women that serve in law enforcement, our fire, our EMS, that our streets might be saved. We thank you for men and women that serve on battlefields across the world, that we might continue in this great free land. And Father, we ask tonight for wisdom, discernment, boldness, and courage to step out and to step forward, to continue to make Davie County a great place to raise a family, to do business, and, Father, to live life. So, Lord, tonight, give us wisdom, discernment, give us knowledge and understanding to carry on the mission you've given us and to do what you've called us to do. And we'll pray this prayer in Christ's name. Amen.
Okay, if we can all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right. Glad to be back in person on a kind of a unique scale, but it is good to see everyone out this evening. As such, before we get to the Ethics and Conflicts Disclosure, you will notice that normally we do have five commissioners. One of them couldn't be with us tonight, Mr. Blakely. He is joining us remotely. So as we go through the evening, we will be asking him to verbally vote if a vote is required throughout the evening. And I will ask Mr. Vogler, the county attorney, to ask him for his vote for the record as we go through this evening. So just bear with us as we work through that technology. But he is here on this computer, so.
And Mr. Chairman, members of the board pursuant to the rules of procedure that was adopted April 13th, 2020 concerning the ability of individuals to meet electronically, I would ask James, at this point in time, we see you, a picture of you, we see you moving on the computer, and we would ask at this point in time, are you prepared to move forward yourself? And do you have both visual and sound?
Yes, sir, Ed. I'm good to go.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So with that, the next item on the agenda is the Ethics and Conflicts Disclosure, and I'll call Mr. Vogler.
Sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168-86 and the Davie County Code of Ethics adopted December 2, 2019, I would ask each of you commissioners, before you adopt the agenda, if there's any actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest with respect to any matter on the proposed agenda that you have before you, which would come before the board for a vote this evening. If so, please speak up and let the board know at this time before the agenda is adopted. And I will also ask James, since he is not present, if he has anything on the agenda to speak up at this time. James, do you have any perceived conflicts of interest, potential or actual conflicts that you know of?
Yes, sir.
And the rest of the board, if you would affirmatively say yes or no?
No.
No.
All right. Thank you. So next, we will move to adopt the agenda. Would someone like to make that motion?
Sure.
Motion to have a second.
Second.
Second. Okay. All in favor, raise your hand.
James raised his hand.
Okay. All right. So the agenda is approved or adopted 5:00. Okay, so next, we move to public comment period. I understand there's quite a few folks signed up this evening, and everyone's got three minutes, and we want everyone to be heard. We would respectfully say that if several of you have the same point, to take that into account, but everyone on the list will be heard. So with that, we will ask you to step forward to the microphone as Mr. Vogler calls your name. And Ed, have you got anything to add to that?
Just the rules were on the back, in the back of the building where you came in to sign in. Each speaker has allowed a total of three minutes to speak. If you're speaking for a group, you're allowed up to five minutes. You will need to let us know if you're speaking for a group. Before you start, I am the designated timekeeper. I will be holding up sheets as to when you have two minutes remaining, when you have one minute remaining, when you have 30 seconds remaining, and then when you are to stop. And when that time for you to stop comes, and I hold that up, if you would please stop. You're to address the board as a whole. You're not to make any verbal exchanges back and forth with the board as far as asking them questions and expecting answer back from the board. It's not intended for a prompt you question and answers, but in fact, it's intended only for public comments by the public. And with that said, we have got several individuals.
Mr. Chairman, could I, if you don't mind, Ed, could we turn those lights back up? I'd really like to connect with who's speaking.
Yeah, that's fine with me. Eddie, could you turn the lights up? Yeah, perfect. Yeah, thank you.
And for the public's information, we normally allow 30 minutes total time allocated for public comments, which basically gives 10 people the right to comment, the first 10 people on the list, and then those after the 10th one are usually carried forward to the next meeting. We've got a total of 21 individuals who signed up, and if it's the pleasure of the board to allow all 21 to sign, to speak, then we would allow more than the normal 30 minutes, which means we're looking at about an hour and a half, or hour and a half, hour and 15 minutes, thereabouts. If that's the pleasure of the board, I will so move forward with that.
All right. Not to be difficult with the lights, but is there any way to turn these up, down up here? I mean, an airplane's gonna land up here in a minute.
With that said.
Thank you.
Members of the board, the first individual who signed up is Romy Gaskin on the solar farm.
Thank you. My name is Romy Gaskin. I'm a resident of Putting Ridge subdivision. I'd like to begin by acknowledging Bird's Eye's efforts in revising their site plan and leaving the entire view shed on the west side of the site. But there are still many other concerns that we have about this issue as Davie County residents. The overwhelming majority of residents in this area are against this project. We showed up and spoke out at the zoning and planning meeting. We showed up in September, and we're here tonight in numbers once again to oppose this project. Throughout all of this, we have heard from a lot of people, but not the landowner. We've heard from the adjacent landowner, who, by the way, lives in advance, nowhere near this site. What reason would he have to advocate so strongly for a site that he's not anywhere near unless it benefits him somehow? There's no stretch of the imagination to say that if this is approved, that there will be another one on the board in the forthcoming future. Why not a referendum and let the people decide what we consider rural beauty? I can see the rest of my time to Amy Backus.
Next one we have is Amy Backus.
Mr. Renegar, permission to approach and give you some reference materials?
And Ms. Backus, you might want to go ahead and start because your time is running.
Thank you, okay. My name is Amy Backus, and I live on Cornwallis Drive. Our HOA recently had a lengthy meeting with the developers of the project and Energy United. Their revised site plan was discussed, along with energy in Davie County, and the new site plan goes a long way in taking measures to mitigate the view shed from our neighborhood, and we're welcomed changes. I appreciate the efforts of Bird's Eye in hearing our concerns, and in particular, Landon Abernathy. While the view shed is a concern of any solar project, there is a much broader issue going on with solar in Davie County that I hope you focus on when deciding your vote tonight. We have concerns about what to expect next with the decision you make tonight. At the September meeting, Energy United made three statements that I think are important for your consideration. First, the Howell property was specifically chosen as a desirable location, noting it abuts the substation. They stated they had surpassed the state mandate of energy they must generate from renewables, and notably, they are always looking for ways to add renewable energy. In October, Mr. Meadwell gave remarks on solar and stated, "You can look for bigger solar projects to come before you," as energy companies want large farms and are not interested in the smaller 40 or 50 acre farms. Also important for consideration, as Romy had mentioned, is an adjacent landowner has been advocating for the rezoning to solar. So given these data points, I think it is likely that adjacent properties are going to be asked to rezone to solar as well. And I think it's reasonable to ask that you plan for this as an aggregate of all lots surrounding this 50 acre site, and consider the big picture when you make your decision. I provided you with a map of the area. Look at the size of the adjacent tracts of land. Consider the size of the potential footprint of solar and how easy it is to expand with the established infrastructure already in place. If you rezone this parcel, what rational argument could possibly be made against approving another adjacent property, given there are no established ordinances, objectives, or metrics for managing solar in the county? Metrics and data are important in assessing any project. Just for reference, in the meeting last night with Bird's Eye and Energy United, I asked how much energy does Davie County need. Turns out, we need 200 megawatts at max capacity. I asked how much energy is created from a solar farm, and was told one megawatt is generated for every six to seven acres of solar. Our county currently has 614 acres of solar.
Ma'am, your time is up. We each, each individual gets three minutes, and there's no yielding of time unless they're speaking for a group, and in that event, they have five minutes worth of time.
Thank you.
And James will need to see a picture of what she handed out to. Richard, you want to hand that or hold that in front of James, or I'll do that? James, can you see the handout?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can you see what she was talking about?
Yes, sir, Ed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, the next individual that signed up is John Snyder.
My name is John Snyder. I live in Putting Ridge, and I'm here tonight to speak against the solar project, but in a broader context than just what is here in Davie County. I'm not absolutely convinced about the science behind solar and wind fuel sources. Much of this new energy plan and argument is politically driven. People singing the praises of solar and wind power claim that these sources of energy are more economic or more environmentally friendly than fossil fuels. But do solar and wind power actually provide net gain in fuel efficiency or net reduction in carbon emissions when everything is taken into consideration? From all I read, I believe a definitive answer is still up for debate. Solar panels are manufactured in China, one of the world's most egregious polluters, with hardly any environmental regulations. Most of the minerals and elements in the manufacturing process of solar panels has to be mined, which further damages the environment. The equipment used in mining, the mining process runs on fossil fuels and emits carbons. Once mined, these materials need to be shipped to multiple locations around the globe and to China for the manufacturing process. They are moved by ships, trucks, and rail, all of which burn fossil fuels that emit carbon. The plants in China where the manufacturing process of solar panels is completed run on coal and other fossil fuels, which emits carbon. Then there's, these completed solar panels have to be shipped from China back to the United States around the world on vessels which are powered by fossil fuels also emitting carbon. And all along the way, China uses an exploited labor force in the manufacturing process. And once the solar panels reach the United States and other destinations, they must be shipped by rail or truck to their final destinations. More fossil fuel used in carbon emissions. In preparation for the placement of the panels, large areas of forest must be cleared, and again, we're burning more fossil fuels and more carbon emissions. And the footprint of these solar farms is huge, not to mention unsightly. At the end of their useful life, 15 to 20 years, these solar panels contain toxic materials, and there's no clear plan, that I'm aware of, for what we're gonna do as a nation in the future to deal with the toxic waste of solar panels and large batteries used to store energy in cars and homes, et cetera. We are, we have numerous solar farms already in Davie County, and more are on the drawing board. A significant amount, almost 50% of the energy produced in this county comes from solar. Do we really need more? Are we going to shoulder the burden of the solar energy for the rest of the state of North Carolina? I say a no vote for the solar farm is an affirmative vote for the future of Davie County. Thank you.
Members of the board, the next is Fred Smith.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity tonight to speak regarding Davie County solar farm projects. I'll keep my comments short this evening, however, I would like to express my concerns for the direction of Davie County involving solar farms. Like you said, my name is Fred Smith. I'm a resident of Putting Ridge. I'm also the owner and operator of Revivency Properties, which is a business that I run where I purchase distressed homes, primarily in Davie County, renovate and resell those homes for a profit and to increase property values within the county. I've done plenty of research over the years regarding property values over the, looking for distressed homes. There are certain things that you look for when thinking about purchasing a distressed property, with resale value being priority. A few factors that may affect resale value could be such issues as what neighborhood the property is in, is the location in a property in rural setting, or is it in a neighborhood? Does it, does the home sit around or under large power lines? All these things can affect resale and property value. So when the discussion of solar farms come up, of course, I wanted to see how it would affect my current property value in doing some research. You can find where solar farms could negatively affect resale. It makes sense, right? You have two properties of equal square foot lot size, bed bath, one sits beside wooded area, one sits beside solar farm. As a potential buyer, which would you buy? In a study that was written by Alex Cuffner of the Providence Journal, October of last year, they stated they looked at how prices change before and after installation of a project, and found that the values within one mile, on average, was only $5,741. It's not that large of a number, they acknowledged, but in the loss in value totaled all the properties around the solar installation, the figures climbed to $1.7 billion, granted, in a more dense populated area. However, you can see where this could lead if we keep adding solar farms. Since I'm about out of time, you'll hear from my wife regarding additional concerns. I will leave this with you. You have the support of these residents tonight. You don't have to make this decision on your own, but we're asking you to make the right decision and vote no on additional solar farms for Davie County. Thank you.
Members of the board, the next individual we have is Julie Smith.
Good evening. I'm Julie Smith, and I live in Putting Ridge on Cornwallis Drive. I'm gonna follow up a little bit on what my husband previously spoke about. Our concern is with the direction that we are going with solar farms in Davie County. It seems that we have no current plan in the county as we approach these requests. And yesterday, we were a part of a Zoom meeting with Bird's Eye and Energy United, which was very, they were very accommodating, and they answered lots of our questions for about an hour and a half. And it's really not about them at all tonight. It's about our direction as a county and where we're going with solar. As we all know, we have a comprehensive plan that has a vision for Davie County, and that's been laid out for us. Unfortunately, they do not address solar farms in the comprehensive plan. With the questions that have been raised and that you have heard, and you will hear from the other members of the community tonight, how is it possible that you could continue to rubber stamp solar farms in this county without some sort of guidance? You're not being asked to make this decision on your own, just the five of you. You have all of the residents who are here from the county tonight, who are taxpaying voters in this county, who elected you to stand for the citizens. And what we're asking you to do tonight is to vote no for solar in Davie County.
Members of the board, the next we have is Chris Gaskin.
Hello. I live at, in Putting Ridge on Cornwallis Drive. I also have another property in Davie County that we rent out. So two properties in Davie County. Both are in very rural settings. I worked for RJ Reynolds Tobacco. I've worked for RJ Reynolds Tobacco for 32 years. I'm currently executive with the company, as well as an officer of the company. In 2013, I've moved, well, I've moved all over the country, right, in sales. But we knew, because we lived here before, that we wanted to, I wanted to end my career here, as well as beyond my career. So in 2013, I got that opportunity. And I looked for a year and a half, my wife and I, from anywhere from Greensboro to Moxville and all points in between. We chose Davie County. We chose Davie County for the rural aspect of it, the rolling hills, and quite frankly, the property rights of not only the people that own the property, but also the people adjacent to that property. My concern for solar farms is not just the 50 acres we talk about tonight, because that could turn into 100 acres, could turn into 200 acres or more, right? So we could be back in this room time and time again, because there absolutely is no plan for the future. These are one-off situations that we continue to whack a mole to figure out the right thing to do. In the tobacco industry, as you can imagine, I've been in many of these rooms, fighting for the taxes on tobacco, as well as bans, most recently in California. We had many, California did pass a ban on certain tobacco products, and at the end of the day, many different levers were pulled, but we ended up getting it to a vote of the people. This issue is not that different, right? I feel like this needs to go to a vote of the people, not just the 50 acres for tonight. But what is the plan for the future, and how are we gonna limit and put a disciplined approach in to how we deal with these solar farms in the future? So I would urge you to vote no tonight, put a plan together in how we deal with this in the future, and take it to the vote of the people.
Members of the board, next we have Andy, and I'm not sure on the last name. It's either, it's Backus.
Backus, okay.
I wasn't sure whether that was a year or K.
Good evening. My name's Andy Backus. I live on Cornwallis Drive, and I'd like to address specifically the planning piece of this solar issue. In September, commissioners wisely tabled the Howell Farm project largely because the county's comprehensive plan was silent on the topic of solar. Direction was given to county planners to address this shortcoming. Mr. Renegar, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you personally last week, and I understand that there has been no further planning since September on solar. Alarmingly, you said that county leaders now have apparently no intention to address solar via the comprehensive plan, and instead, solar decisions are to be made completely subjectively by the commissioners. Sir and commissioners, I believe this is bad policy. Comprehensive planning is indisputably a best practice for local government. It has been done very well here in Davie. Why would we not continue that path? If solar is not included in this process, how can there be predictability for citizens? How could anyone buy land in the county without some assurance that it won't be surrounded by solar panels? How can you subjectively say yes to this project and then say no with any credibility or consistency to another landowner? If this is the path, then proactive, good government will quickly be replaced by reactive executive action that breeds contention, lobbying, and frankly, devolves into pure politics. Mr. Renegar, you told me you were struggling with this decision. I submit that your struggle is because there is no vision or planning to rely upon. You're seeing this dynamic right now for this issue. Solar is a growth industry, and these issues will undoubtedly continue. Don't we citizens deserve at least some high-level planning and forward-thinking as the comprehensive plan provides for other utilities? Page 30 of the comprehensive plan states, "Utilities can therefore be a significant driver of economic development, as well as help manage growth throughout the county when planned appropriately." Let's first establish your high-level vision for solar in the county. Planners can easily produce baseline metrics like substation maps, usage forecasts, and provider demand. Shouldn't we all know a well-reasoned answer to how much is enough? Before any solar projects are approved, we citizens ask of you, continue your wise path from September and do not abandon the comprehensive planning process, including citizen engagement. Lead us with a clear vision and metrics for solar. Insist on continuing best practices that enable predictability and transparency, and do not succumb to a practice of subjective contentious executive action as the easy route. I have a handout here that lists seven questions regarding solar policy. When I'm done, I'd like permission to pass them to you, but I'd say if the answers to these questions are no, or I don't know, then there can be no well-supported yes vote on any solar project here tonight. Thank you, and permission to pass this.
Period at this time, Mr. Renegar, at this time, do you want to read those questions to James Blakely, so he has what everyone else has?
Absolutely. So the seven questions that Mr. Backus has presented to us is, first, does the county have an overall vision for solar energy projects slash utilities? Two, how many acres of solar farm does Davie County need? Three, how many acres of solar farm will Davie County allow? Four, has the county exercised the review process established in the recently adopted comprehensive plan to address the absence of solar utility planning? Five, has the county done any comprehensive planning for solar based on metrics and data so citizens can understand rationale of decisions and participate in the process? Number six, is there a public or government time constraint that requires an immediate decision on this project? And number seven, has there been any consideration of initiating a public referendum on solar projects so citizens can vote on these contentious matters? And at the subtext, if the answers to these questions are no, or I don't know, then there should be no yes vote on any solar projects. And Mr. Backus stated that when he was at the podium. So, Mr. Blakely, did you hear those as I read them?
Yes, sir. I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
And thank you for the time to address everybody here on the solar panel issue. Myself, I am for the solar panels. Once they're installed, they're a great neighbor. They make no noise, no sound, or anything else. They're quiet. They help reduce our dependency on foreign oil. They're quiet, they help reduce our dependency on foreign oil, and the new regime coming in, looks like the oil is going to get more expensive for everybody. So, I think it's a good thing. And today, I drove down the west side of the property in question, and you could see a few houses up on Putting Ridge on Cornwallis Road. And I also drove down the east side of the access road adjacent to the property, and you cannot make out a house up there at all. You can see no rooftops. It's completely invisible to anybody living up on Cornwallis Drive, or as they call it, Putting Ridge. I think it's a good thing, solar energy. It doesn't cost, it doesn't waste. Once it's installed, it's there, and if it doesn't work out, the powers that be have to take it all out and put back the land the way it was. So it's kind of a no-lose situation on it. It would be great. And I live closer to it than anybody else. I'm almost adjacent to it. I live on Putting Ridge, not off of it, like Cornwallis. I have no problem with it whatsoever. With all the things they're going to put in place with the fencing and the greenery, I won't even be able to see it. I don't have a two-story house, so I can't see over it. So, it'll work out real good. And with an eight-foot fence and greenery, you won't even be able to see it at all. So, I think it's a good thing. I think Davie County should move forward, not backwards, on renewable energy. Thank you.
The next individual who signed up is Stanley Watkins.
I'm Stanley Watkins, I'm a professional engineer in North and South Carolina. And my concern, like other people have said, is sort of with the precedent that we're setting here, and the fact that we really don't have a comprehensive plan. I feel like we need something else before proceeding with additional solar. And one thing to think about is, how much of the county is okay to be covered with solar? Davie County has approximately 170,000 acres, and currently, we have a little less than one-half of 1% in solar. Now, if you add this project, and then the one near Ratliff Road, which is very, very large, you're getting close to 1% of your entire land mass, with half a percent of your land mass being added in only one project. And my point here is, it should be done in a thought-out way. Is this what we really want? And maybe the answer is, I don't know what your answer would be. But there are all sorts of questions, such as, as you transition large amounts of agriculture land to solar, how are you affecting agriculture and employment? At some point, you might. And this is happening in counties all over the state, this is happening in other states, and it isn't going to get easier. And that's why, again, why I feel like we need to think this through carefully and have a plan. Recently, that Stanley County, North Carolina, adopted some additional restrictions for solar farms, and they even addressed things such as how opaque the vegetative barrier needed to be after a certain amount of time, and all sorts of things like that. So I just, that's what I want you to think about, is going forward, what is our plan? Because we're going to have more and more of these large projects. And just want to have some way to evaluate those, so we know where we're going. Thank you.
Stanley County.
Stanley County, near Album, near Album Mall.
Thank you.
Members of the board, the next individual who signed up is Sandy Rocket.
Good evening, my name is Sandy Rocket, and I also live on Cornwallis. I'm actually one of the three houses that's probably going to be affected the most with the possible site of the solar farm. And I totally am against it. When I moved to Putting Ridge about 14 years ago, the purpose of moving out there, I moved from Clemmons Louisville location, which is really highly populated. And when I moved out here, that's why I moved out here, is the beautiful land. I've always said, as soon as you cross over that Yakin Bridge, it's like the whole world just opens up. So I totally am against it, simply because, as some of the folks had mentioned, the property values, I'm concerned about that. And again, just the whole beauty of the neighborhood. So, my vote is an absolute no.
The next individual that signed up is Brian Bedner.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Brian Bedner. I am the founder and CEO of Bird's Eye Renewable Energy. We are the developer of the Perrondale Project. I just wanted to point out just a few things very quickly. First of all, a thank you to staff, thank you to this board, because of, you know, going through this, and thank you to Putting Ridge. We, they have been, made themselves available to us. We have, they have given feedback on our plan, which we have amended, which you'll hear about in a minute. I just wanted to mention a few things that I think are important to note. This is a well-sighted project. There may be other projects within the county that, we don't have any other projects in the county, we're not involved with Junction Road, or some of the other ones that I've heard about. This is well-sighted for a couple reasons. One, when we chose that site, it was in response to an RFP that Energy United had put forward to say that they needed additional solar energy. When they did so, we worked to find a site that met a couple criteria. Number one, it was near electrically, somewhere that we could interconnect and effectively and inexpensively for Energy United where they wanted the power. Number two, it was a site that was broadly, heavily screened, well off of traffic patterns and roads, and this site meets that test. With the, with the current winter leaf cover that you see, it is virtually invisible. No project is completely invisible. I mean, changes happen on the landscape. This project is virtually invisible. And as a result of the feedback that we got from Putting Ridge, we were happy to try to improve the, the protection on Viewshed. I recognize that, you know, it is a change from the current land use, but those happen on occasion, but I am proud of the fact that it is well-sighted, it's 800 feet off the road. And I kindly request that we get an opportunity to show that we can do a quality project here. It is the right place for this project. Thank you very much.
The next individual who signed up is Stephen, and it's M.C., it's either L.A.C.H.E.R.M. or C.A.C.H.E.R.M.
Yeah, I'm afraid even if you could read my writing, you probably couldn't pronounce it. My name is Stephen McCatharine, I'm the Director of Engineering Services for Energy United. Just wanted to speak real briefly to a couple of comments that we've heard since the last meeting and tonight. The first thing is regarding our requirements to meet the mandates of North Carolina. In 2007, North Carolina passed Senate Bill Number Three, which required all utilities to get a certain percentage of their power from renewable sources. While Energy United does currently meet this mandate, this is not something that you meet at one point in time, and then you're done with it. The way Energy United meets this mandate is we enter into contracts with a variety of renewable power sources. Those contracts continually come up for expiration. So we're continually looking for new contracts to replace our old contracts, so that we can continue to meet this requirement. And that's one of the things, one of the reasons why we do it this way, and one of the reasons why we want to do it this way, is we're constantly looking for ways to reduce our power costs and our overall power supply costs. So, in order to meet the mandate, it's not, like I said, a one-and-done thing. We're constantly looking at what the requirements are, constantly looking at how to meet those requirements in the most economical way possible. Second piece to that is just that it is a percentage of our load, our load continues to grow, so obviously, we are constantly having to look for new sources as well to continue to meet that mandate. It's just an ongoing process. Another one of the comments that we've heard around here is the site expansion, as the previous speaker mentioned. Energy United went out for RFP at particular sites, because we knew we had capacity at those substations to be able to handle a site of this size, not bigger. If it gets much bigger, the economics of it go away from our standpoint, because then we would have to start to upgrade our infrastructure, particularly there at the substation. So really, we're not looking to expand this site. It fits in nicely at the size that it is, and it meets what we need. And I guess that's the biggest thing, is just, you know, the site is good for us, because it does make economic sense. And by keeping our power costs low, that's one thing that directly benefits all our members, even those members in Davie County. So there is a direct benefit. By helping keep our power costs low, we can help maintain lower rates. So, appreciate your time.
Members of the board, the next individual is Matt Howell.
Good evening. I apologize, I haven't prepared anything. This is the first time I've really had anything to do with this. Charlie Howell, the property owner, is my father. I grew up on Putting Ridge Road, on that land. And my brother now lives out there. He's carrying on my grandfather's farm out there. And in the 42 years I've been in Davie County, I've seen a lot change, along with everyone else here. And I'm sure some things we agree with, some things we don't. But we have to realize that change is just part of what happens. Things are going to change, some things we're going to like, some things we're not going to like. But what scares me is if we start sliding down that road of, we're going to halt progress or halt change, because people moving in decide they now want to make the loudest noise and dictate not what's legal, not what's right, but what they want by making the loudest noise. And I just wanted to come and just, just speak for a second, and just say that. We trust y'all to please do what's best, not just for the county, but for the folks living here that work themselves to death to own that property, that work hard to give that property to their children, to carry on that legacy. And for those folks to be able to do with that property what they choose to do, as long as it's legal and within due bounds. We shouldn't have to be forced to comply with the squeaky wheel, just getting the grease, just trying to dictate what we do on our land, because they don't like it and can make more noise than we can. Thank you.
The next individual is Charles Howell.
My name is Charlie Howell. My wife and I are the property owners of this proposed solar farm. I, I grew up on Putting Ridge Road, lived there until I was married. Then shortly after my wife and I were married, we lived in the house where the Sykes live now, so I've spent a lot of time on this land and property. And as my son mentioned, my younger son, Jordan, lives in the house that I grew up with, which joins this property. So this is family land, and it means a lot to myself and my family. My wife and I bought this portion of property, which is, joins our, the property that we already had, about six years ago. And it was family property, a family member that we bought it from, but I actually bought it from a realtor, so I really didn't get any family discounts there. But we bought the property primarily because, one, it joins property that we already had, and I was concerned about what might go in on this property. I'm wanting to keep our land as a family farmland as long as I possibly can. So much of the farmland in Davie County has turned into housing developments, and I don't want to see that happen to our land. We have a selfish interest in this, in that we will be paid by the solar company for the use of our land, but my wife and I are retired, and what it's going to be, it will enable us to do, we'll be able to pay for this land, and at the end of the contract, this solar company has paid us for our land, and we still own the land, and I want this to revert back to farmland. I don't want it to become a housing development. And that's all I have to comment at this time. Thank you.
Next is Jordan Howell.
Thank you. I'm Jordan Howell, and I live at the property. And as my parents told you, we're primarily interested in having farmland around there, and so I was worried about what neighbors would be around there in the future too. And as far as use of that land, I'd much rather see it as a solar farm than I would housing development, shopping area, anything that is going to be making noise, making traffic, having lights shining, smells, anything else. I really think that the solar farm's not going to be an intrusive neighbor at all. For that matter, I see the lights and hear the sounds of the school far more than I would have any impact from a solar farm that's half the distance from me. And everything else, I think, has already been covered pretty well, but I think Bird's Eye is doing a great job as far as their buffer, also, as far as a visual barrier. Thank you.
Next individual who signed up was Landon Abernathy.
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm Landon Abernathy, I'm Director of Development at Bird's Eye Energy. You folks have heard from, from me on a number of occasions now, in response to the solar development. You know, I don't, I don't want to rehash things that we've already been through in the, in the original public hearing, but what I would like to talk about are changes that we've made since that point, based on concerns that we heard from the Putting Ridge community. Amy, thanks for the shout-out earlier. We've worked really hard to, to meet the concerns of the neighboring property owners here. We revised our site plan and moved our, our envelope for development eastward by 150 to 200 feet, such that we could leave the entire existing vegetative buffer in place. Our original plan called for leaving about 30 feet of that mature buffer in place. We, it was made, you know, loud and clear, readily available to us at the last public hearing that Putting Ridge didn't think that that was going to be an adequate buffer for, for a visual screen against their properties. So, you know, through flexibility of our partners, we were able to retool our design and make sure we had something that they could be comfortable with. I, I think, you know, anybody in that community, after our very constructive meeting last night, would, would agree that we addressed those concerns. The other concern that they've raised a number of times is in the process of how solar gets done in Davie County. You know, I'll readily concede, I'd love to see solar in the comprehensive plan and have clearer guidelines from the development community, we'd love to be a part of that. What I will say is that the process in Davie County allows the Commissioners a lot of latitude to, to look at projects on, on their own merits and individually vote those projects up or down. So we're really proud of, of what we've done with this project to address neighboring concerns. You know, I, I can't speak to what's happening out with the Junction Solar Project. There's good projects and bad projects at every scale imaginable. I, I think it's apparent that this project- I think it's apparent that this project is one of the good ones and should be approved on its own merits. Thanks for your time.
Next, we've got Mark Hager. Next, we've got Don, is it Vernon?
Yes, my name's Don Vernon. I live adjacent to the Howell property. There is a buffer of trees between my house and the solar farm where it's going to be. However, at this time of year, there is the watershed lake down there that you can see. It looks like a lake from my house, and you can see it on that map that I've looked at earlier. I can see that. So I know that I can see, I will be able to see some of the project from my house, even through the winter time. My concern is, which has been noted before, is the problems with if the project is increased in the future beyond what is proposed now and the decrease in the property values that will be forthcoming. I do like our residential community as it is. I am not in favor of growth because that is what most of us moved out there for. If there had been a solar farm there, I probably would not have bought that property at that time. And since then, I have bought more property down towards Farmington Road, and we have had also the encroaching, the gravel quarry from the south coming up our road. And I just feel like we are, our residential properties are being reduced in size. So we are being inundated by some things such as a lot of us do not want.
And Mr. Chair, that is the last of the individuals who signed up.
Okay, just to clarify, I thought you said there was 21.
Some.
Oh, okay, all right. And then one you. All right. All right, thank you for all those comments. This time, we do have a public hearing on North Carolina General Statute 160D, and I'll ask Amy Flight to come up for that presentation.
Good evening. This text moment consists of technical changes that have been approved by Raleigh. We have a lot of background information here in your packet. But the quick summary is that the changes to the legislation have been in the works in Raleigh for six years, and now they've approved a final version, and those changes are before you tonight. Staff drafted these changes and sent them to the School of Government for review and comment on our entire zoning and subdivision ordinances. And we presented these to the planning board last October. The intent of the changes is to combine both the county section and the town section together. They specify conflict of interest language and streamline terminology and procedure. You have a chart in your ordinance that goes over all of the impacted sections of the zoning ordinance, and I'm going to zip through those changes now. Some of the changes are simple, changing the reference number to the statute, and some are more detailed. So beginning with Section 155.001, the general statute now requires these definitions to be included, and it defines close familiar relationship. This will come up later when we get to conflict of interest. They have also removed the age restriction on manufactured homes. You can no longer specify a manufactured home date, but you can keep other design standards. Next, we see a reference update and a table, update to the table of uses to allow rural resorts and retreat in the R20 with a special use permit granted by the Board of Adjustment. And then next, we have manufactured home age restrictions that's updated again, and we have updated reference numbers for telecommunication towers. On pages eight and nine, we have a terminology change. 160D has done away with the phrase "special conditions zoning," and they've replaced it with the term "conditional zoning." These approved sites remain in effect. We're just changing what they're labeled and called. So this will also be changed on the adopted zoning map. Page 10 begins the conflict of interest language. The first edit pertains to the planning board and outlines what is a conflict of interest and when a member should not vote, and also requires all members to take an oath of office before serving their appointed term. Page 11 repeats the same language for planning staff and the Board of Adjustment. Page 12 through 13 clarifies for the Board of Adjustment and specifies what sort of conditions they can impose on projects. And finally, pages 14 through 17 specify legal notice requirements. The county was already performing these, but now they're written out and includes another terminology change. The term "development plan" has been replaced with "vesting plan," and those statutory references have been updated. And I know that's a lot. It's one of our largest text moments. So if anybody has any questions.
One question on the agenda that we have. The legal notice shows publication November the 26th, 2020, and December 3rd, 2020 for a public hearing on December the 7th. I believe I spoke with you before the meeting, and you indicated that that public notice had been pulled.
We recalled that public notice.
And we have a new one, and what's the dates on that?
No, January 21st and January 28th.
And that's for a February 1st meeting, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct, in this room right now.
Okay, that was quite a bit. Has anybody got any questions from Ms. Flight at this time? Okay, this is a public hearing, so at this time, I'll call on Mr. Vogler.
The Chair has announced this is a date and hour of the public hearing pursuant to Chapter 153.8 of the North Carolina General Statutes and Chapter 155 of the Davie County Code of Ordinances. This board is conducting a public hearing on proposed amendments to the Davie County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 155 zoning ordinance, with the specific purpose of having our current Chapter 155 comply with the new North Carolina General Statute, Chapter 160D laws. Do you notice that this public hearing was advertised and ran in the local paper with general circulation as counties required by law, as noted in the public hearing? And I would ask that anyone who wishes to comment at this public hearing from the audience to please come forward to the podium, state your name for the board, and then comment on the proposed amendment. Mr. Chair, seeing no one come forward, I would now turn the public hearing back over to you as Board Chair, so that you might close the public comment section of this public hearing, provide the board the opportunity to discuss among yourselves what, if any, action you wish to take at this time with regards to this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Vogler. So at this time, we'll declare the public hearing closed. Does anyone have any comments about UDO 60 or 160? It is something that's coming from Raleigh, just asking us to get more compliance. It's more of a, I won't say check the box, but it is somewhat like that. But does anybody have any comments? Not entertain a motion?
And Mr. Chair, prior to taking a vote on this matter, we would need to ask the board member who is not present, James Blakely, if he has been able to hear all the comments, and if he has any questions or comments of himself that he wished to make at this time before you go to a motion and a vote.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have any questions that are concerned with the information that was presented today.
Okay. For those of you who couldn't hear that, he said he did not have any questions of Ms. Flight. So with that, would someone like to make a motion for action?
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve in a second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none of the four present, if you would vote for it, raise your hand. That's four. And Mr. Blakely, what is your vote?
Yes.
Okay, that does pass, 5-0. All right, so next we move to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions of the county manager or staff about the consent agenda?
I just have one comment. If it would please the board, I would like for Mr. Bone to read the resolution for Black History Month, if that'd be possible. Is that possible?
Stacy, did you want to read? Does the clerk normally read this? Or, I mean, I can't, I didn't.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. One of us can read it, as long as it gets read.
I got it.
Mark has, if you want him to read it.
Give me a read it? Okay, be glad to. Resolution, African American History Month, February 2021. Whereas the month of February has been designated as African American History Month, and whereas National African American History Month in February celebrates the contributions of African Americans have made to American history and their struggles for freedom and equality, and deepens our understanding of our nation's history. Whereas the life of every American and the lives of people all over the world have been touched and enriched by the contributions and struggles of African American people. And whereas, American language, science, music, industry, religion, agriculture, literature, government, athletics, law, and philosophy have all been profoundly influenced by the intellect, labor, and spirituality of the African American community. And whereas, African American history is ongoing and continues to shape and enhance our nation and our world. And whereas, the observance of African American History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Davie County Board of County Commissioners does hereby recognize February as African American History Month. Thank you, Commissioner Jones. And I will also point out that February 17th, at the senior center, there will be a celebration of Black History Month. Any other comments about the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Okay, have a motion, have a second.
Second.
All right, Ms. Finney seconded that. James, I think she beat you to the punch. All right, so have a motion in a second.
And again, we would need to inquire on whether or not James has any comments, or if he had any problem hearing any of that.
That's right, I heard everything. I'm good with everything, thank you.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion in a second. So the four of us that are present, if we would indicate approval by raising your hand, that is four. James, Mr. Blakely, what is your vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That passes 5-0. All right, so next we move to the county manager's report, and I'll call on Mr. Bone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I just want to say thank you to the entire team that's making the Davie County Vaccination Clinic so successful. We received many positive comments last week. Just want to say again, thanks to the Health and Human Services, Emergency Services, and Sheriff's Office for their efforts with the clinics, as well as everyone working at the call center. Additionally, just want to say thank you to all the county employees across numerous departments assisting with the input of data from each clinic. The cooperative effort of the entire Davie County team has been awesome and inspiring. And I don't know if everyone really truly realizes how many people are part of this, and it's really been a full countywide effort. So thank you to all the staff. For just a continuation of COVID update, as of January 29th, 1 million people in North Carolina have officially been vaccinated. As of last Friday morning, the CDC ranked North Carolina as sixth in the nation for total doses administered, 12th for first doses administered per 100,000 people, and 17th for total doses administered per 100,000 people. Also, as of January 29th, Davie County had 3,077 total lab confirmed cases, 260 active cases, eight current hospitalizations, and 40 deaths. As of January 29th, we had 20,220 COVID tests completed in Davie County, which includes multiple tests for some individuals. Davie County has administered approximately 5,800 vaccines to date, 4,520 first doses, and 1,280 second doses. The priority groupings for vaccinations, the state of North Carolina currently has five priority groups for vaccinations. First of all, priority one, healthcare workers and residents and staff of long-term care facilities. Priority two, adults aged 65 and older. Priority three, frontline and central workers. Priority four, adults at high risk for exposure or increased risk of severe illness. And five is everyone else. Priority groups one and two are the current groups eligible for vaccines. The COVID-19 vaccination distribution continues at Davie County Community Park. Davie County has held two vaccine clinics last week, on Wednesday and on Friday. The Wednesday clinic was for second doses, the Friday clinic was for first doses. Both clinics went extremely well. 1,605 COVID-19 vaccines were administered by Davie County last week, 950 of those were second doses. The county plans to continue the current vaccination schedule with the Wednesday clinic for the second doses and Friday clinic for first doses. The Wednesday clinic will continue to be held from 1:00 AM until 4:30 PM. We have ensured we will receive the second doses as we need them. For the next three weeks, the state is guaranteeing baseline vaccination allocations to providers. The state is taking approximately 90,000 of our 145,000 weekly doses from the federal allocation and dividing those doses among all 100 counties, based on 2019 population data from the State Center for Health Statistics. Within each county, vaccine is then divided amongst providers, depending on their reported capacity relative to other providers in the county. For the next few weeks, the baseline for Davie County will be 400 first doses. This is the guaranteed amount. We may receive more doses than this, but this is what is guaranteed. The Friday vaccine clinic will continue to be held from 10:00 AM until 2:00 PM each week for first doses. Announcements about who is eligible for each clinic will be provided on the Davie County Health Department website, or can be accessed by calling 336-753-6540 after 3:00 PM on Mondays. Folks going to the vaccine clinic are asked to fill out the paperwork ahead of time, and the paperwork is available online. Opt-In Serve continues to manage a drive-through COVID-19 testing site beside the Davie County Emergency Services Building in Moxville. On January 27th, Governor Roy Cooper extended the modified stay-at-home order until February 28th. He is also keeping the eviction moratorium and statewide order allowing to-go mixed-drink sales in place through March. Staff continues to prepare to move the Sheriff's Office and Health and Human Services Department to the new governmental center on Farmington Road. Davie County will have a small ribbon-cutting ceremony in fourth facility on February 15th. We plan to have some pictures of the ribbon-cutting online and hopefully in the enterprise as well. The contractual substantial completion date for the East Davie Sewer Project was December 1st, 2020, and the final completion date of December 31st. Both those dates have passed. The contractor is working to complete the project. Field order number seven was issued on January 11th, 2021. So we look forward to the completion of that project. In regards to repairs for the wastewater treatment plant in Kolemy that was due to flooding, the SCADA computer replaced, has been replaced with all associated software, including the SCADA interface, alarm dialing, and other equipment. The effluent flow has been restored and verified, and the SCADA interface and reporting has been verified. We have additional repair efforts that are ongoing for the wastewater treatment plant. In regards to the new water treatment plant, it's still in design phase. The county received notification from Economic Development Administration, or EDA, that our application for funding has been selected for further consideration. The grant application involves a water line transmission portion of the project associated with the water treatment plant. While this notification does not guarantee final approval or is legally binding to EDA to make an award, it is certainly encouraging news, and we hope to get final notice that that has been approved in the next few weeks. We've also heard some encouraging information about a possible state We've also heard some encouraging information about a possible state revolving fund grant for the water treatment plant project. And so, and, and so, a grant and loan package. Hopefully, this recommendation will be finalized later this month. We have an updated draft of the fire and rescue ordinance that has been shared with commissioners and the fire chiefs. We'll have a meeting with the fire chiefs tomorrow to get feedback from them on the ordinance. As you know, the Board of Commissioners will hold a retreat on Wednesday, February 17th, starting at 7:45, and lasting until about 12:30. The Davie County Bike and Pedestrian Plan is nearing completion. We plan to have a public hearing on this item at the March 1st Board of Commissioners Meeting. Additionally, the Davie County Recreation and Parks Winter and Spring Program Guide is available with an assortment of new programs and special events, and so we encourage citizens to look at, at that program guide. And, Mr. Chairman, that is the, that is all for the County Manager's Report.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions from Mr. Bone? All right, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is old business, and it is something that we've heard quite a bit about this evening, which is the Perrindale Solar Farm on Pudding Ridge Road. And we had a public hearing on this in September, and the matter was deferred, and it is before us this evening. And so, I don't know, Mr. Meadwell, have you got anything you would want to add to what has been discussed, or? All right. So, again, the, the matter before us is the 50-plus acres on Pudding Ridge Road, off of Pudding Ridge Road, that the Howell family owns. So, at this time, we'll open up discussion for the board, and...
Mr. Chairman, I have a few comments, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Am I a big fan of solar and wind power? No, absolutely not. If sun doesn't shine and the wind doesn't blow, people are left without power. Do I believe our federal government is going to require more and more renewable energy? Absolutely. The reason that Mr. Howell has come in here, from what I understand, is that he's trying to create an income from this property and preserve his farm for his descendants. And to me, that is a very noble cause. The location of this property, which is almost two football field links off of Pudding Ridge Road, and behind trees, makes it a good site for a solar farm. Its proximity to a subdivision makes it a reliable and desirable location. Now, the topography of the location is down low, behind trees, not on hilltop and obvious. Shielding, once installed, the panels should be obscure from surrounding properties. I know there's a solar farm within one-half mile of my property, and once it was put in and shielded, you can't even see it. Even in the wintertime, when there's no leaves on the trees, because they have the proper type of vegetation around it to shield it. Has it negatively affected our property values around it? I don't know, because nobody wants to sell their property and hasn't had a property up for sale in several years. Could Mr. Howell lease his farm and be able to preserve it and keep it? If you lease farmland, you usually pay your property taxes off of it, and that's just about it. I think he's looking to generate some income, as well as pay those property taxes. The only kind of farming use that usually generates kind of money that he needs is either a high-intensity cattle yard, hog farm, chicken farm, or compost operation. All of which, all of these have many negative impacts, including high traffic, loud noise, unsightly buildings, strong odors, flies, rats, and mice who come to eat animals' feed, and the snakes and other predators that come to eat the rats and mice. All this occurs on a 24-hour, a day, seven-day-a-week, 52-week-per-year basis. Do I believe solar and wind farms are good for all of Davie County? Absolutely not. Do I feel that the reason for this application, the location, topography, and shielding for this property is satisfactory? Yes. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make the motion to approve this application.
Okay. All right, well, we have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion. I have personally visited this site. I have personally also talked to many of the multi-generational families that have immediately joined the site. And built on Perrindale Holdings' adaptability and willing to work with the Pudding Ridge homeowners, who try to overcome their challenges. I will second the motion.
Okay. All right, have a motion in a second.
Mr. Chairman, brief comment. The, I, I concur with those tonight that have said that we need to, we need to develop some vision about what we're going to do with solar farms in Davie County. We're the second smallest landmass county in the state of North Carolina. The broader vision in regards to solar farms that, that I see is, I, I do not see that solar farms create jobs for Davie County citizens. I do not see that, really, if you, in the questions that we've asked previously, that it produces energy for Davie County citizens. The energy goes into the grid, there's no guarantee that the energy even stays in Davie County. You know, those are two, those are two of the main points that I have. I just think that we have to discuss this in a broader way. Now, if we're moving forward with this project tonight, so be it. But prior to anything else coming before us, I think we need to have some broad discussion about what we want to do with solar farms in the second smallest landmass county in the state of North Carolina. I have all the respect in the world for the property owner. I have respect also for those that live around the property. I would say this, and, and I, I, I'll just, I just want to tell you this, and, and certainly, there's nothing solid here, but I have arranged a meeting later on in the week. I think we need to have a broader discussion from, that, that would affect folks like the Howell family that have owned and, that, that own large farms and have held on to them for a long period of time, where we look at outside the box in terms of how we handle the exemptions on those, on those large blocks of land. If we want them to stay, if we don't want them developed, if we don't want them leased to solar farms, if that's the vision we have, how do we then help these folks that have owned these long, these large tracts of land for a long period of time? Do we, do we, once they're, once they're through farming it, do we extend the exemption for them? Do we reduce, maybe not completely keep the whole farm exemption for, for whatever period of time it might be that they own that property? Do we, do we maybe go halfway on the exemption? These are things that we can discuss. Now, there would have to be legislative remedy to that, but these are things that I think we need to discuss, instead of forcing these old, long-time farms to be sold to developers, or leased out, or sold to solar farms. And I just think we have to, you know, and, and, and again, I'm just starting this process, but I just think we have to have some outside-the-box thinking on this, so that we're not forcing folks to do things they might not necessarily want to do. And I'm not putting words in anybody's mouth, I'm just saying, I think there are ways we can address this. But, and I just want to make those comments, I, I, I just think, I think as Richard has said, you know, will there, with the current administration, will there be more pursuing of, of this type of renewable energy? Probably. Does it make it cost-effective? Not necessarily. And what happens when the next administration comes in and they pull it, they pull it back? There are just many questions here, so, so, Mr. Chairman, those are, those are my comments. I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to add just a short amount to that. Just like Mark alluded to before, quite frankly, the Howell family is probably one of my favorite families, Matt especially, and, and the service that he provides to our county and our state. But, I just read an article today about, already in Utah, they're experiencing problems with how to dispose wind turbines that they're taking apart because they've reached their lifespan, and it discussed that that would also be an issue with solar panels when they reach their lifespan. So, just like, thinking about if the, you know, next administration changes the direction they travel, then also, when all of these farms reach their expiration, where are we going to put all of those panels, and, and safely?
All valid points. You know, I... The state of North Carolina requires these utilities to have X amount of renewable energy. And, you know, the state needs to take solar farms over. On one hand, I'd like to see that. On the other hand, I don't, because we like to, our governance here in Davie County. As I've shared with several people, Mr. Bockus in particularly, I have struggled mightily with this, going back and forth, and, so, I don't know, I, and really, nothing to nigh has changed my mind. I mean, as far as, no compelling evidence has come forth tonight that I hadn't already thought through, but I do appreciate the input. So, has anybody else got any comments? I appreciate, I will say, landowners' rights, being a strong Republican, I, that carries a lot of weight with me. I have a couple of family farms, and Mr. Jones makes a good point. What can you do with these things if we're just holding the earth together? And it can become a burden. But, anyway. So, any other comments? Anything else we've overlooked, or haven't considered?
And, Mr. Chairman, before the vote, I must, at this point in time, ask if James Blakely has adequately monitored the discussion, including the comments from the public, if any? Allow board members, if you wish, to, to make a comment yourself, or if not, and are you ready to vote yourself?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay.
Okay. So with that, at this time, I will call for the votes of all in favor of approving the Perrindale Solar Farm on Pudding Ridge Road. For the people that are here, raise your hand. That's two to, I assume you two are no. It's two-two. James, what is your vote?
Yes.
That passes, three to two. At this time, we go to Commissioner Comments. I'll start with Mr. Blakely. James, can you hear me?
Can, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
I apologize, I couldn't everyone come out tonight, and everyone's comments and concerns, obviously, I couldn't join you tonight, but thanks to the technology, we can come in with Zoom. You know, I just want to follow up by saying that, you know, our veteran community rural county is starting to change and starting to have to make hard decisions. And those decisions are, are things that we, we try to weigh out all the good and the bad, things that we have to do. You know, keeping a rural community is the reason Davie County has always been so good. Families want to come here. Parents want their kids in our school system. There's just so many good things here in Davie County, and, and I really want to keep that quaint rural county feeling, while also trying to manage the growth and infrastructure to become minimum in practice. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank our staff, especially at the Health Department, for the job they have done. It's been our union job getting these vaccinations out. It's not a perfect process, but I think we have people coming from outside the county because of the process, and so, I want to really thank our staff for that. Thanks to the high school for allowing us to meet here tonight and open the facility up. David, good to have you with us. And I tell you, we toured the new government center this afternoon, and that's going, that is a wonderful, wonderful facility for our Sheriff's Department, Health and Human Services, and the citizens of Davie County. So, and thank all of you for coming tonight and voicing your opinions here. It's a very tough decision. It's a very tough decision. And, and I can assure you that, that, that both sides on this vote have thought this thing out and, and prayed and considered how they would vote. And so, just want you, in my opinion, want you to understand that, and thank you for, for being here tonight with us.
Okay, Commissioner Finney?
I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. The several of you that I've spoken to one-on-one in reference to this solar farm issue, I have thoroughly enjoyed the, my conversations and your participation, and I hope you will continue to be involved and to come to our meetings and to listen and to share your thoughts with us. That is how we learn, that is how we move forward, that is how we know what the citizens of Davie County are looking for. I also want to thank the people who are involved in the vaccination and testing clinics, because it has been unreal. I know they're exhausted. I do want to especially ask that we continue to remember the citizens of our county that are suffering because of all of the isolation and changes in the way of life, our elderly, especially those in facilities, our children who are spending additional time in unpleasant homes, that school was their escape, and now sometimes they don't have that escape. Just remember them each and every day, our families that have not been able to properly have funeral services for their families. We just, as we remain enclosed into our quarters, we need to think about those who are suffering as a result of that. And thank you so much to our first responders who, every day, but especially now, are walking into uncertain circumstances and being exposed to unknown and known circumstances every day. Thank you so much.
Point taken.
I would also like to express my gratitude to our Health Department and all those people that worked with the COVID-19 vaccines that they've been giving out. These people have done a yeoman's job. They had numerous people down there all the time giving shots. I know some of the surrounding counties did it by appointments, but we did more by doing it the way we did it, and the Health Department did it. it the way we did it and the Health Department did it than those surrounding counties. Also, I'd like to say to the folks that are here tonight about the solar farm, this was an excruciatingly difficult decision for all five of us on this board. I know that because we've had many discussions on it. Um, I appreciate their view just as much as I hope they appreciate mine. Uh, in the end, you have to do what you think is best for the county, uh, the folks that get power from Energy United and for the gentleman that owns the farm. And, and I think that's been served. But I would like to thank all of you for coming out tonight and everybody for speaking because you never know when you might say something that nobody has thought of and that could change a, a vote at the last moment even. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I do appreciate everyone coming out tonight. Tough decision, but, um, I would ask the, you know, the county manager to, building on what's been said this evening, I would ask the county manager to immediately discuss with planning some options for this board to take some of the subjectivity out of this process on these solar farms. And, um, I would ask that that be presented next month's meeting, if not before. I want to shout out to the Health Department, um, and all the people that's involved, it's more than the Health Department, but, uh, those people have been working under extreme stress and have did an unbelievable job. Um, and, uh, as Mr. Bone already stated, we are leading the state and we're, people are calling us, I'm told, to find out how we're doing it. And, uh, but, uh, Sheriff's Department, um, doing a great job with traffic, uh, EMS, just everyone's involved. It's really been a team effort and it's been really positive, but if you see one of those folks, please tell them thank you. And, um, we did go toward the government center, as someone mentioned, and, um, looking forward to getting the Sheriff's Office and Human Services into there. I think it's going to be a big improvement and, um, and it's impressive, I think, but I'm biased. So at this time, that's it. Thank you for being here. Um, we do have a closed session, so I have to read this. So at this time, we entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen eleven, A three, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body. Would someone make that motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, uh, second.
Second.
Second. All in favor, four people that are here.
And James, before, before they count the vote, did you hear that? And do you, do you have any discussion before you vote?
Did you hear that, James? Okay. And your vote is, are you, what is your vote to go into closed session? Yes, no?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, we are in closed session. Thank you. Okay, we're back in open session, so, uh, at this time, we have some new business to take care of. Ms. Finney, I understand you have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion that we authorize our county manager, David Bone, to execute an agreement for a hydrology study if needed.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Jones. Any further discussion? All right.
James, you heard that?
Yes, I'm good with it.
Okay. All right, so the four of us here, if you approve that, raise your hand. That is four, zero. James, what is your vote?
Yes.
Okay, that is approved, five, zero. All right, thank you. And so next, we move to adjourn to have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor. James, you want to adjourn?
Yes.
Okay. We are adjourned, thank you.
Richard always does that.
I love it.